Annual notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to the Harold News, the Record, the South Organite, the Observer, the Township Report, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled birthdays and public meeting of the board. May I have a motion to approve minutes number six and seven? Vocal?
Mr. Abuskado, four. Ms. Alberti, five. Ms. Alcury, six. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, five. Ms. Mallonak, six. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schwett, four. Mr. Bruno, five.
I think Mr. uh... What was it, Mr. Trump? Mr. Creino has some certificates he's going to present. Mr. Blake, supervisor of body performing arts, has certificates to present to some students. He'll explain the program for which the students are being honored. Mr. Spencer.
Last Monday evening, I had the privilege of traveling to Montclair State University with a select group of our high school juniors and seniors that participated in our fall show, 1293 Tours this year. They were nominated for two very prestigious awards at the Montclair State University Theater Night Awards. They were nominated for outstanding lighting design and outstanding production by a chorus in a dramatic work. So we have certificates to honor those that participated. I don't know if any are here, so I'll read the names and if you are here, please come up and receive your certificate. Sarah Almeida. Tristan Vinitas. Julian Gobey. Maya Christosimo. Jordan Fernandez. Mackenzie Fletcher. Lauren Gold. Anthony Hayes. Sarah, come on up, I saw you just walked in. I got your certificate. Matthew Dufour. Olivia Perez. I don't see if they're ready in the front. Congratulations, Sarah. Sarah was the assistant director for our department. Finally, we have Nikla Fazola. Ray Tannen, party. Jose Rodriguez. Steven Giordano. And that's it. We're very proud of their accomplishments. We also had Zach Razan as his president.
Okay, we have no one for public hearing. Moving on, Finance Committee, Facilities and District Planning, Ron Schweber. Vocal?
Mr. Abuskado, four. Ms. Alberti, five. Ms. Alcury, six. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, five. Ms. Mallonak, six. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schwett, four. Mr. Bruno, five.
Four. Education Curriculum Committee, Sue Upsher.
May so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted items will be entertaining. Hearing none, I make a motion that one to five be approved.
Vocal?
Mr. Abuskado, four. Ms. Alberti, five. Ms. Alcury, six. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, five. Ms. Mallonak, six. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schwett, four. Mr. Bruno, five.
Four. Policy and Rules and Regulations Committee, Joe Abuskado. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Rules or Regulations Committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted items will be entertaining. Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve items one through none. Vocal?
Mr. Abuskado, four. Ms. Alberti, five. Ms. Alcury, six. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, five. Mr. Mallonak, six. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schwett, four. Mr. Bruno, five.
Four. Athletic Student Activities, Abuse Committee, Jerry Goddard.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the listed actions under the category of Student Activities in the Recognition Committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertaining. Hearing none, I make a motion.
Second. Vocal?
Mr. Abuskado, four. Ms. Alberti, five. Ms. Alcury, six. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, five. Ms. Mallonak, six. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schwett, four. Mr. Bruno, five.
Unity Relations and Safety and Security, Mr. Schweber. Hearing none. Motion number one to be accepted. Second. Vocal?
Mr. Abuskado, four. Ms. Alberti, five. Ms. Alcury, six. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, five. Ms. Mallonak, six. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schwett, four.
Does this board have any unfinished business? Hearing none, we're moving on. Uh, new business. Ms. Alberti.
Be resolved that the Lindhurst Board of Education approve the agreement with Accuscan Digital Archival Solutions, copy on file at Central Office. Be resolved that the Lindhurst Board of Education approve the agreement with Huntington County Educational Services Convention, corroborative purchasing, copy on file at Central Office. Be resolved that the Lindhurst Board of Education accept a donation of $750 to Lindhurst High School for the Brain Injury Alliance of New Jersey.
Second. Vocal?
Mr. Abuskado, four. Ms. Alberti, five. Ms. Alcury, six. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, five. Ms. Mallonak, six. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schwett, four. Mr. Bruno, five.
Four. Personnel. Chris Musto.
Anything changed since we were here?
Not that I know of.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the listed actions under the category of Personnel, may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertaining.
Vocal?
Hold on. I want to make motion one through sixteen be accepted.
Second.
Fourteen. That's why I said anything changed. One through sixteen.
Mr. Abuskado.
One through sixteen. Four.
Ms. Alberti, five. Ms. Alcury, six. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, five. Ms. Mallonak, six. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schwett, four. Mr. Bruno, five.
Four. Mr. Creino and the Superintendent. Do you want this?
On page thirteen of the handout, there is a Superintendent's Close of the Year message. I'm certainly not going to read it, but for your interest, if you get an opportunity, you may want to review that. On page fifteen is a host of announcements, recognitions, and other notable achievements of our students and staff from throughout the school district. Each and every month, in the Superintendent's Report, the focus is on achievements for that month. So once again, I invite you at your leisure to review that particular document as well. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for attending this special Board of Education meeting. As we draw to a close of the school year, I'd like also to thank the Lindhurst Board of Education for its generous opportunity to serve as the interim superintendent of schools during this 2015-16 school year. It has been a dynamic, wonderful year for me personally and professionally. I'm delighted to see the district's public school system moving ahead on a path to greatness. All constituents in the community have worked together tirelessly to establish a vision of educational renewal dedicated to excellence in every aspect of our educational program. A solid foundation has been laid for everyone in the district who partner with Mrs. DeMarco, our incoming superintendent of schools, Mr. DePizzi, our school business administrator, board secretary, the Board of Education, and of course, the community at large to build upon. I want to thank my successor and wish her all the best in her new position. She will need the support for everyone as she embraces with the administration, with the staff, with the Board of Education, and with the community in general, challenging responsibilities, always trying to address situations in terms of what's in the best interest of children first and foremost. I look forward to next year to be collaborating with Mrs. DeMarco and the administrative team. Providing a high-quality education for each and every child is the immediate goal. The long range effect will be to elevate the status of the Lindhurst Public School District in the state of New Jersey. We will become a lighthouse district. At this time, I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Shona DeMarco, the old recent the administrative framework for the 2016-17 school year and beyond. Let's welcome Mrs. DeMarco.
Sarah Miles, is that your phone? I do want to take a minute to congratulate Sarah. For those of you who have been at our cast meetings, you may have seen her beautiful presentations to the board. She was in the walk for Lupus and in support of her mom. And she organized with her guidance counselor, the fundraising came to work and put forward her request. And we at Central Office did support that request. She had our sister, Darian Kerpl, and supported her great cause. And we raised well over $900, even more than that.
I just wanted to say thank you to Roosevelt Lincoln Columbus Memorial, Washington Lindhurst High School, Central Office, and Community School. My four-year purple donation, donate a dollar in fundraising, was a great success. You all helped me raise awareness for Lupus. We have the best principals, teachers, and students. I was able to raise $1,046 in cash donations, $75 on line donations, and $40 in checks. My goal this year was $500. I've raised in total $1,161. Thank you for that. And keep this number next year. With thanks, Sarah Miles.
So thanks to Sarah, I have this great introduction talking about our faculty, our staff, our administration, and of course, our community because Sarah is a testament to the type of student that we have here in Lindhurst. And those types of students are a testament to you because as their parents, you are their first and their lifelong educator. So all the good that they bring here is thanks to you. So that was a great segue, thank you. Tonight, I take some time to speak to you and first of all, thank you all for coming out to hear this. I'm privileged to have the opportunity to be able to speak with you all at one time in one voice and talk to you about 2016-17 as well as beyond. Because as you see, this framework is very much dependent on multiple people coming together in the format of a team to really not only move our district forward, but certainly move our community forward. So I have a few objectives that I'd like to accomplish. One of them is, of course, to present myself and introduce myself to you professionally and personally. Some of you may know me in one context, some may know me in another context, some may not know me at all. So I do want to take this moment to allow you to better know me. I do want to speak with you about my mission statement as incoming superintendent of schools, as well as exhibit a design that I truly believe will turn our dreams into our destiny. I need to make sure that you fully understand how very important and significant your role is in actually making this all come to fruition. So I'm going to spend some time recognizing your importance and your significance as well as lay out the immediate framework for 2016-17. And finally, I understand that I have work ahead of me that is my responsibility as superintendent and steps that I need to take to make this process move a little more swiftly and a little bit more quickly. And I'll talk to you about those as well. A little bit about me, I am a lifelong resident who grew up on Kingsland Avenue and then moved down to what I thought was the country on First Street over by the North Arlington. I remember calling my mom saying, "There's a squirrel in my garden, I have grass." But I was a lifelong resident and proud of it. I'm a proud graduate of Lindhurst High School. I was fortunate enough to go on ahead to Seton Hall University and I did get to represent Lindhurst High School as a valedictorian of class of 1992 at Seton Hall. I then had my family and realized I needed some intellectual elements. So after they were asleep, I realized Montclair offered classes at 1:15 to 11:00. And I said, "Why not? They'll be better than that," and off I go. So I really just seized a little me time and earned my masters in English because English really truly is my academic passion. I was fortunate enough to receive an award for some of the research that I did, that was the Mary Bondsen Award. And afterwards, I went ahead to get my masters in education, administration, and leadership. As a result of my work there, I was very proud to be recognized as the recipient of the Outstanding Potential Educational Leadership Award at Montclair at one class. So again, I felt I did my town proud. My experience in teaching ranges from starting in kindergarten, spent some time in fourth and fifth grade, and then went ahead to sixth grade as well as grades 10 through 12. I would tell you firsthand that the same teaching strategies that work in a kindergarten classroom work with 12th grade AP students. Lights out, heads down, after something happens at lunch that they're all out, it works magic. So I've learned that. I have worked in three different districts. I did take a break from education and took a short hiatus and worked in corporate management. Kind of where the blackberries were the size of bricks, that was my time there. It was great, it was fantastic, a wonderful experience, but it only made me realize that education was where I belonged. The gift of teaching and the gift of being around students in an educational environment, it truly beats the amount of money that can be earned in many other fields for me. So I've been in Lindhurst since 2006 and I've been an administrator since 2013. I served at the elementary level, at the high school level, and now Central Office. But the real part about me is certainly my family. So I do have four children. They range in age from 22 down to my capoeira, who's 13. And they are it, they are everything. And certainly, they are products of Lindhurst that I'm proud to have representing our town as well. So I spoke to you a little bit about my interest in English and doing a masters in English requires a thesis. And the irony here was I never thought that my English thesis would ever have any connection to my educational administration work, but indeed, there has been a connection. As I taught students English at any grade level, I always pointed out to them when we were reading fiction, "Who cares? These people never existed. This place may not be a real place. These events never really happened." But yet, year after year, we have students read these works and talk about them and analyze them. Why? What's so important? What is the message in this work that keeps people going back to it? What are we supposed to learn from it? My interest happened to be this Scarlet Letter. And the thing that probably struck me the most was my anger at the Family Hawthorne. Are you kidding me? You put this woman in front of us at the start of the novel, standing with a baby, on a scaffold in front of everyone with her red egg on her chest, and you never let us know what really happened. Was this as malicious as we thought? Was it something different? You never give us the details of the encounter that leads to the egg. The omission bothered the heck out of me. And it was in that moment that I realized, wait a second, maybe this is what it's all about. It's what he's not telling us about the past. That's where the lesson is. So it took me about 67 pages and a little over a year, but I did it. And I was able to prove that in this Scarlet Letter, the Family Hawthorne illustrates that the behaviors that lead to a problem are irrelevant, they're not important. How people respond to those problems, that's what's important. That's what the focus has to be. Think of Roger Chillingworth. He was so angry, so betrayed, so, so ready to seek revenge that his face actually starts getting bleached and his muscles hardened and his bones start to crack out of just this stress and frustration. What ultimately happens? You guys. Arthur Dinsdale, the pastor, the Puritan, suffering from this guilt from this encounter. What if I'm found out? What if somebody knows it's me? And everything he lives for comes with death, so now he's not looking so forward to that. He's completely hopeless for the future. Ultimately, he withers off and dies. But then there's Hester. Wearing her egg, chooses not to leave the community. She stays, she raises Pearl. And what does she do? She makes these beautiful, beautiful adornments for weddings, for celebrations. And over time, people start to ask, "Why does she wear the egg? What does it mean?" And their response? It must be angel, or apostle, or angel, because this woman is so amazing. The egg loses its meaning completely. They realize what they see and what they know is what Hester is. We need to make Lindhurst's mark mean something different. We need to move on from the past. We have to forget about where we've been, what's happened. And we need right now to make a commitment to move forward. Let's make Lindhurst have a brand-new connotation when people think of the schools, when people think of the community, when people think of the district. We can make that mark change right now. What do I know that I need to do? I need to create, implement, and hold a conceptual framework that's sustainable. What can we do now that's going to work, that's going to keep working? So we can stop changing, we can stop having so much transition. We have so many strengths and talents in this district. I've said frequently, I just wish that outside community members had the opportunity to see what we see on the inside because there's so much talent here. We need to utilize and implement that talent in the right areas. We have to recognize what's likely certain. Now, I understand nothing's certain, but when we start hearing about the township coming ahead, building a junior high school, and really, excuse me, moving forward with that in a very positive direction, we need to prepare for that in a certain manner. And then we have to be proactive in anticipation of that which is uncertain. The what ifs, the possibilities, we need to be proactive. We need to communicate expectations and information to the community that we can do a really, really good job with. And that's not hard to do, but we need to make time for it so you understand what's going on with us. And we also need to, of course, construct a foundation that will service our students with educational excellence. We need to build really positive communal morale among students, staff, faculty, the community. Students should be proud to be in a school in Lindhurst. Parents should speak with pride when they say that they live in Lindhurst and they send their children to the public schools. Now, faculty and staff should wear proudly their blue and gold when they're out saying, "Yes, I have a teacher in the Lindhurst Public Schools and I'm very proud of that." We also want to demonstrate to the entire Lindhurst community our dedication and commitment we made to improving our district. It can't just be words, it has to be true dedication and evidence of that. And of course, we want to engage the community and earn their support. So all of these lead up to one simple mission statement. We need to earn a qualitative and quantitative reputation as a high-performing district in the state of New Jersey, just as Dr. Creino said in his introduction. That's what it comes down to. Moving forward, we want to keep your kids our kids. We want them as young as we can get them and we want them until their high school education is done. So we So we really have to offer you a lot. We need to meet and exceed QSET requirements. We need to provide in-district programming and services for students with a variety of needs. Those needs can be health needs, they may be educational needs, and they may be needs of our talented and gifted students as well. We need to work with the township to expand pre-K services. We will be offering pre-K 3 in 2016-17. And certainly be hoping to change our pre-K 4 program to make it a longer day so that working parents have the opportunity to consider that program for their children's pre-K education. And finally, we do need to work with the township in the planning, construction, and development of the junior high school. We have a joint commitment with them there. Again, we know that we need to achieve student test scores that are competitive with like districts. That is important. We do get ranked on numbers. We need to accomplish that. We need to expand our curriculum and programming in the areas of applied skills, health and medical skills, and technology. These are areas where we're losing our high school students. They have dreams, they have goals, they know where they want to go to. We need to provide the services that will get them there. We also need to expand our school-supported clubs and sports to grade 7 and 8 with the junior high school coming in. We're going to have incredible facilities. We're going to have a lot of opportunities to provide them with very, very strong basic foundational skills in these sports areas. So that's something we need to focus on as well. What will that do? That will certainly expand our feeder program. It will give us additional facilities, more sports to consider. But ultimately, it will improve our athletic programming. And finally, we need to keep students who are excelling in the fine and performing arts in district. Another area where we often lose students. Because we are not offering the theater programs, the dance programs, the performance programs that so many of them want. So with the junior high school, we're going to have the facilities to do it. Now we need the coursework and the curriculum to back it up. And we need to make sure that that follows them as they enter high school as well. How do we do all of this? Well, this is where you really come in as big players, if you're citizens of the town. Because we do need to put forward a referendum that's going to give us the opportunity to provide the space, facilities, and programs that will allow us to prepare our pre-K 6 students for the experience they're going to have at the junior high school. And you can see a lot of those experiences on the renderings here this evening. But then we also need to work on expanding our high school courses and our facility in order to make sure that what they get at the high school follows the foundation that they've received at pre-K 6 as well as the junior high school. So we have work on either ends of the junior high school to do. We're going to need money to do that. What do we want to do? Well, we want to, with that referendum passing, create five neighborhood schools. They would run pre-K through 6. We would have new add sections at each grade level, which would significantly reduce class size. We would be providing an opportunity for closed lunches at all grade levels. So students are not leaving or feeling that their only option to stay in school is to eat in their classroom. We want optional spaces for them to go to have lunch and be able to stay in school. We also understand that there's a lot of dependency on siblings. Having four children, I know this firsthand. So we want to create the opportunity for students in junior high school to bring their younger sibling to school at the pre-K 6 level and then be able to get on a bus at that school and safely get to the junior high school. We would have the scheduling in place for that to happen. Of course, we also want to meet needs of those students so they're not transported from one school to the other during the school day. Services like ESL or special education. We want to have more of that school-based in the neighborhood schools so they can be in one place and receive all services they need. And finally, we want these neighborhood schools to bring together each section of our community. Pre-K through 6 is a lot of years. The relationships that can be formed being in one school with groups of students, parents making friends with other parents, really getting to know principals and having staff members that have seen children grow over many years really gives us a very good understanding and data and information to share when those children go on to the junior high school. So we want to establish those relationships and really bring back that neighborhood feel to Lynn Hurst. At the high school, we want to create departmental wings. So we can actually have a social studies wing, a math wing, a language arts wing, a health, health and technology wing, et cetera. We want to create maker spaces so we can really incorporate the standard scheme curriculum that we have in place. We also want to, of course, develop learning spaces that support what we need for the fine and performing arts expansion. Provide skill-based learning opportunities. We need the space to be able to teach those applied skills. And then finally, increase the number of courses and types of coursework at all grade levels. As well as establish the curriculum instruction and programming before the children go to junior high school and follow-up after. So overall, we're looking at improved facilities. We have neighborhood schools, we have family-friendly schedules, we have less transportation throughout the day. Students are only going three transitions, three different schools for their entire pre-K through 12 journey. We have reduced class size. What does that result in? We have improved district rating. We have property values increase. We have a community that truly stabilizes. We have increased attraction to young families because of our school system. And we really have a sense of that strong community pride that we're all deserving of. Finally, we are, we have an improved district, we have an improved Lynn Hurst, we have an entirely improved community. We have attraction to businesses and increased community revenue. And finally, neighborhood stability and success. It begins now, on this night, right here. Because this is our commitment not to look to the past, but only to look forward. To recognize what the needs are, and of course, on November 8th, to support those needs by going out and casting your vote. It also begins now because my job begins now. So I need to identify what needs to be in place now so we can be in motion as we go ahead. So we need to put forward a framework for 2016-17 that foresees and prepares for what is uncertain as certain can be and is also proactive in anticipation of what is uncertain. So we do understand that Lincoln School will be extinct. And then, you know, I have to just add something because my son's a student at Lincoln School and my career here in Lynn Hurst started at Lincoln School. So I have to tell you, just thinking about that, it's going to be way harder than I think any of us can imagine. So there's a lot of love in that school, there's a lot of great things, so I'm, I'm, it is quite a bittersweet thing when I think about it. We also have to recognize, folks, that Memorial Campus is limited. It was a temporary facility put up as such. We have a certain amount of time approved by the state to use it because of the purpose it serves. They will give us an extension on that time, but it is not forever. It is not built to code and we are very limited to the types of students and the ages of the students that can be there because of its size and structure. So I think that's really important. Memorial Campus is not a permanent facility. It's there just for the purpose of overcrowding and we're limited in the number of years that we may use it. We are also going to anticipate that we are getting that junior high school. It will cover grade 7 through 9. And because of that, we're going to have a junior high school experience that spans the 7 through 12 grade levels, leading us with pre-K through 6 in elementary. So we'll be proactive in anticipation of what's uncertain. We want to focus on pre-K 6 neighborhood structure. We want to think about the number of principals we're going to need long-term and we want that team in place now. Because again, we want to avoid further transitions down the road. So by getting that team together now and working together, when the time comes that facilities change, our leadership hopefully won't have to. We also look at our district curriculum supervisors. And we reorganize them a little bit. You'll notice that each supervisor has a major core content area as well as an additional area. We also want to spread these supervisors out to make sure that teachers of all grade levels are getting instructional support. So we want supervisors located at the high school. We also want supervisors located at the pre-K 6 level. And we want to make sure that we are out there with all of the other Bergen County towns at roundtables, at seminars, at workshops, at symposiums. We want our voices heard and we want to be part of everything else that's working for other districts like ours. We also know through research that teachers need support. And the one battle that I think everyone in education has faced is the mandates of the state of New Jersey. Putting numbers on everything, making everything seem as though it's an evaluation. And forgetting that we really need to be supportive of one another in education, just like in any other profession. So what we want to do is, we understand we can't get instructional coaches in place in addition to our supervisors, but we want to tap into the abilities of our supervisors and allow them to also serve as instructional coaches. So while they will be working on their curriculum and their content for their areas of focus and their subject matter focus, we want them to be able to go into a classroom, roll up their sleeves, and simply help teachers. Co-teach with them, assist them, be a go-to person for teachers to reach out to without feeling that, oh, I'm going to reveal that I'm doing something wrong or I'm going to reveal that I don't know how to do something, or I'm going to reveal that I'm asking for help. That is what good colleagues do. We ask for help and we help one another and we tap into all the resources that we have. So that's one big change and one, you know, implementation we want to offer to our teachers and our staff is that support. It's okay to reach out and say, you know what, I really know my curriculum, I know the standards. I'm doing everything I know I'm supposed to be doing to teach these kids, but we're crying out loud, they're just not getting it. What can you tell me? What are you seeing? What might I try? So that's the real shift we want to make here. We want to let them be true coaches, use their talents in a non-value tip way. Mrs. Woldo will be our district math and talented and gifted enrichment curriculum supervisor. And she will also be a K-3 specialist. Mr. Spence will take over our social studies department and continue his excellent work with fine and performing arts. And he will be our 4th through 6 instructional specialist. Mrs. Klein will continue her work with English Language Arts and of course, that will be entire district as well as ESL. And she'll work with our 7 through 12 teachers in instruction. And Ms. Zach will be science and world language and also work with 7 through 12 instruction. We have these three other supervisors whose jobs are ginormous. Our athletic supervisor, our supervisor of student services, and our supervisor of special services. Because of the state mandates, they've been called upon to do many, many different tasks. To evaluate their own staff and then go in classrooms and evaluate those teachers and do a little bit of this and a little bit of that. And I think that we've perhaps done an injustice to their real areas of focus and their areas of expertise. So we want to make them a little more concentrated in those areas. We really want our athletic supervisor to not only focus on the sports we have, but be able to explore other sports. To be able to do the research and see what middle school sports are like so we can anticipate that. We want him to really be in charge and the leader of the transportation needs so we can make the best decisions for our teams in getting from one location to another. We also want him to focus on the facilities and make sure we're making the best use of our facilities at all times. Our student services supervisor, Ms. Stevens, has an outstanding staff and outstanding faculty. And we know that our students have issues. Their expertise are in these areas. We want to return them there. The HIV law has required so much of our guidance counselors. And now that we're really understanding and recognizing the processes and getting more depth with that, we certainly want to make sure that they have the opportunity to deal with a lot of the other issues that our students are facing. Same with our student assistance counselors. So our student services supervisor will really continue her work with them. It's so important. And then our special supervisor, special services supervisor, Sharon Kane-Dobson is also going to be overseeing our remedial program. So she will be looking at special services as well as Title I. Again, an enormous task, but one that correlates very nicely. All the funding that we get from the state for special education and Title I will now be facilitated through her office. So we can really make sure that we're using the best use of the funds and making the best instructional professional development decisions for everyone. We spoke about the principal structure. And again, going long-term, we're going to need six principals covering elementary through middle school or junior high school, and then the high school principal. So we want to get that structure in place right now. And we're going to do it in the following way. We're going to make sure that each principal has the experience of administrating over a multi-grade school. So they can form the relationships with families. They can be in charge of multiple levels of curriculum. They can see students develop one year to the next. Right now, Memorial Campus, we only have 10 months with those students, 10 months with parents. And we also want to make sure that we eliminate the transition time that's necessary when students go from third to fourth grade. It's crucial, it's critical. So we have changed the format to Ms. Castrovitchi to Washington School. So she will be our Washington School principal next year. Mr. Strumalo will remain at Franklin School. And Mr. Jane Gerusa will remain at Columbus and Community Schools. Mr. Rizzo is going to have the ability to really work with our third graders in transitioning them to preparing for a fourth grade classroom. With his knowledge and expertise, I know he's going to be an incredible asset to Memorial Campus. So Mr. Rizzo will be the principal of Memorial Campus as well as Lincoln School. Mr. Vasco will remain at Jefferson School. And Mr. Corso will remain at Roosevelt School. So that is our principal structure moving forward. Again, I just want you to consider the numbers and recognize that we will have two of these schools no longer with us in a couple of years. We have a great district-wide communication system in place for safety and security. This has recently been implemented. Now, one touch of a button on a radio that all principals have, that nurses have, the counselors have, the gym teachers have, that other teachers have. One click of a button can put that person in touch with every single administrator, including central office administrators in the district. So if ever there's a need, if ever there's a worry, if ever there's a concern, one click and we're all in touch. The other people that are on that line are the Lynn Hurst Police Department. So we have really invested a lot of money, a lot of time, and a lot of professional development in these radio systems. And I'm very excited to have this type of communication system in place for safety. Again, we're going to have reduced transition time. K-2 students will be, hopefully, most of them will be coming in from our pre-K program. Mr. Jane Gerusa's oversight of the pre-K program will fully help them to be prepared for kindergarten when they come. The same way, Mr. Rizzo for the third graders who are heading onto fourth grade. And of course, we're going to be very strategic in our placement of the administrator and the non-teaching personnel for those principals who are in charge of two buildings. So they will be strategically located to make sure that they have plenty of support. This new principal structure prepares all principals for administration at multi-grade schools, which is something we're going to need again long-term. The structure offers all principals the opportunity to build relationships. And again, the number of principals required following the junior high school construction will already be in place. We're motion already. Every building has a nurse, every building has a full-time custodian, every building has a secretary. It's all as of 2016-17. Every 4th through 8th building has a guidance counselor. Franklin and Memorial share a guidance counselor. Columbus Community Schools and Washington School share a guidance counselor. So our services are definitely expanding. As of 2016-17, we will also have a full-time child study team for the pre-K through 8 level. Again, our K-8 level has a student assistance counselor. Our high school also has a student assistance counselor. Every elementary building as of September will offer both remedial and special education services. And finally, we will be adding an ESL teacher to make sure that we have two ESL teachers servicing the K-8 level. And we will also have one at the high school to make sure we keep the growing need of our ESL population. Other items that are already in place, we are taking a brand-new approach to our talented and gifted program with a STEAM-based curriculum. I'm so excited for this. I've seen this work in progress in the behind the scenes, and I know what's coming. These students are going to be challenged. They're going to be pushed. They're going to be excited, and they are certainly going to be engaged. So that's going to start. That programming will also affect our K through three enrichment. We are also expanding our special ed self-contained classes. Right now, we stop students in self-contained after second grade. It's no longer an option beyond that. The only option is pull-out resource. If students need self-contained, they deserve self-contained, and they will get that all the way through 12th grade. In addition, the high school students who require self-contained will no longer be heading down to the Lighthouse Campus on Riverside. They're going to have classrooms right in the high school, so they can get the full high school experience in an environment that is suitable to their needs. So they will switch between two classrooms with two teachers, have lockers right there for their availability, not be caught up in the overwhelmingness of the high school, but still have the experience and have a well-maids stream approach. The Lighthouse Campus will be used for real-world life skills. We'll be setting up beds there the students can make. They will be able to use the kitchen to prepare small meals. They will do some online shopping that can then be delivered and learn how to use coupons. So for these students, we are prepared for the real world. We need to prepare them for that. Yes, the algebra is important, but so is understanding how to balance a checkbook, how to use coupons, how to use a debit card, how to ride a bus, et cetera. So those are the types of skills that we're going to be teaching for grades seven through 12 at our Lighthouse Campus. We're expanding our non-youth system to grades six through eight, and also peer leadership will be heading to the middle schools as well. And we definitely are adding more courses, what we like to call selective, to make sure that the mandatory courses are balanced with courses that interest students. Adding an additional faculty member to the high school social studies department to reduce class size in social studies. Again, full-time ESL teachers being added, and those special ed student academic classes will be at Lenhurst High School right on-site, no travel into the Lighthouse Campus except for their life skills. I need to get us here faster. So part of my job is to take on some extra work and set some extra goals to make sure that at all areas, we're moving at good speed. We're definitely working on our evaluation system, make sure that it's fair, just, and very consistent, and that's something that's in progress now. We want to make sure that we are recognizing teachers' growth and teachers' development and assisting them with that. So that is an area of important focus for us. We also spoke before about the communication needs, and allowing that falls on me and my responsibility. So I need to make sure that we are keeping in close communication with all of you as to what we're doing and allowing you the opportunity to give feedback on what we're doing, so we can make it even better, because often the best ideas come from you. And we need to get busy. We need to research. We need to explore. We have to find out what's happening beyond Lenhurst, what's happening in other schools that's working for them in order to prepare for the oncoming of pre-K six grades as well as a junior high school and in our high school. So we want to get some teams out there to really explore, learn, and bring back the best practices, so we can figure out which ones we can implement here. We do also want to recognize that advanced placement courses come in many, many subject areas, not always academics. And there's a lot of opportunities out there to get students who you would not think are AP students to be doing really well in an AP class. So we want to hear what more students want to learn about, areas of interest they have, the same with parents, so we can increase the number of AP level courses that we're currently offering, so we can get more students in there. And finally, I want to make sure that I give you my time and my experience as an educator to be able to hear more of what you need to know about and provide you with informational and learning sessions on those topics, so that you can be as involved as you want to be in your children's education. So on March eighth, we spoke about the junior high school. We spoke about being two boards with one project and one goal. But I'd really say to you tonight on May 23rd that we are essentially wanting with one project and one goal, and that is to be a high-performing district in the state of New Jersey. And we can make that happen, but we will definitely need your support. We will need a referendum in place for this framework to be fully implemented. I'm going to do my part immediately, and I'm just going to prepare for everything that the future holds and know that we have that foundation in place. I have to thank the Lenhurst Township and the commissioners, the mayor, for all of their support, as well as Lenhurst Board of Education. These ladies and gentlemen that are leading this district up here are just incredible and supportive, and they have probes, and they have pushed, and they have motivated, and they have truly, truly inspired. Every one of my days that I've been in central office, and I couldn't be more pleased to work with a better, more supportive group of board members than we have leading my district right this moment. Dr. Carino, Mr. DePisa, the principals, the supervisors, the faculty, the staff, they just do so much for us every single day, and I couldn't imagine doing any of these plans or planning a design like this without knowing that they are the force behind it. So we're these students that touched my life, and I do truly look forward to continuing those relationships. You know, the paper can wait. The nights are there for the things that come into the office, but the days have to be seized with time with the students. So I really do applaud just spending a lot of time in the schools, in the classrooms, to be able to continue those relationships and see firsthand what's happening. And so the parents and caregivers, again, you are the lifelong educators. I have said in multiple, multiple presentations and speeches that I've made in a variety of settings that I will assert that our students are the kindest, hardest-working, most-giving, most-respectful students in all of Bergen County. I know that because I've seen it myself in a variety of contexts. Again, that comes from their families, that comes from their home, that comes from you. It is truly an honor and privilege to work with your students, and I look so forward to being able to continue that work with them. We're Lenhurst. It's what we are. And I hope that word means as much to you as it does to me, because I'm proud to say I'm from Lenhurst, I'm proud to say that my children are from Lenhurst, and I'm proud to say that I get to work in Lenhurst. I'm proud to be in Lenhurst. And I truly, truly hope that you can feel the type of pride that I feel for this town, and for those people who aren't feeling that pride, we can offer that same experience to them. One team, one project, and one goal. So I simply ask you to please join together, enable this entire design, and ultimately make our dreams our destiny. I thank you so much for all of your time and attention this evening, and if you have any questions, any concerns, I'm always available for you. In addition, if you have groups that you want to hear more about the referendum, don't hesitate to reach out. We will be out and about once things kick in, but in the meantime, reach out to me via email at the office. We'll arrange something, and we'll work to be able to support your groups and give you the information you need and answer the questions that you might have. Thank you so much.
Hi. Sharon, that was a beautiful presentation. I just want to, if anyone out here has no faith in our new board, I have 150% faith in our new board. By the way, the letter that Sarah wrote, she wants to hand to you, and she did put zero in your score numbers on top. I think she kind of like caught off guard when she was writing and got her off guard. Obviously, everyone here knows Sarah, my daughter, has swat for me. I've been sick for over 34 years with this misdiagnosis to the beginning. Sarah actually approached our old board with the same thing and got denied. I've been coming up here for the last five years, as Sarah has been in school, and not only for my daughter, for all the kids in this district. And I think everyone up here kind of knows that. I never speak just in general for my daughter. I speak for all the kids of our district. I can't even say, I've spoken to Sharon DeMarco before she was where she is now, and she has helped me out tremendously. I don't have anything written here. It's just coming out. This is just Sarah's letter to you. I have full faith in everything. We, as a whole district, board members, town people, have a big, big challenge here. We're going to try and take a D district or a district to higher levels. It's a big, huge project. And I know that with everyone here, I've always done and voted for children's first. I feel we definitely have a board that is all children's first. I can't tell you how proud I am of everyone here, and especially of my daughter. She has proven numerous times how she fights for everything, and unfortunately, I don't know whether it's good or bad. You know, she's the next one that's going to be coming up here after I'm done. I just want to say thank you to everyone, and trust me, there's nothing I can say that I know that we are all on the same page here, and we can only hope and pray for the best district that we can ever have. Thank you so much.
Even though I spoke already, I just want to say another thank you for all the kids and teachers and everybody who helped me do this fundraiser, and everybody who wore purple.